Everybody, you know that while we're all here, we're going to be starting the budget. And I'm not going to pretend that I miss Peggy, and this is romper room, but we know that there are some people watching, so we want to encourage you to be a part of this process. And if there's something that you want to voice your opinion about, please do feel free to contact your city council members through email. We would certainly appreciate that. So with no further ado, we're going to turn it over to our point guard, James.
We get to start the budget season with kind of reviewing some of the information you have in your packet. And it was what, and you also have that same information. Each of you has a folder in front of you that should have pretty much the whole thing that was on the website, the packet that was out there, as well as the line item budget for the police department in it that will be the second half of the presentation tonight. One of the first things that was in the council packet right behind the agenda was a copy of the budget calendar. We've made adjustments to the timeframe for the meetings, though the first budget calendar outlines the beginning of the presentations, January 10 through February 8, as needed for that, the last part of that. That's the section that we're on now. The other page that's in there lists the individual meetings. It's the previous one in the packet. Starts with tonight on the Thursday, the 10th, then next Monday, and then next Tuesday. One thing I would like to verify, Linda, you weren't here as we modified dates, the dates that are listed on this sheet, do they seem like they're going to work?
I think so.
Which is really good, because we struggled-
Thursdays and Mondays, correct?
Tues- if you look here, it's now, there's a lot of Tuesdays on it.
They're all Tuesdays.
This last meeting, we had to move some around-
If they're late enough, they should be okay.
Okay. All right, so that did just want to make sure that that was going to work for you. What we've done the last few years, I've kind of gone through this budget presentation overview sheet. This has been one that the mayor is always happy that I'll read almost verbatim.
Delighted, James.
Make sure that we cover all of this material. But I just kind of want to talk about a lot of the same goals, in fact, I think almost all the same goals is what we've had in the past. Timely communication of issues in a fair and open manner, trying to balance the needs of all community members, ensure we maintain compliance with requirements imposed on us from the state and federal level, ensure that we honor all contracts and agreements previously agreed to, only have deficit account balances occur in projects that are not complete with a plan for eliminating them at project completion, maintaining cash balance in the general fund at 15% as recommended in our financial management policies and by rating agencies, which were actually have finally achieved. Maintain our core services. Public safety would be the primary thing that falls within that. And then streets, our sewer system, sanitary and stormwater. Ensure that employees receive adequate training to perform their duties correctly and safely. Ensure that equipment is replaced on a reasonable schedule to achieve adequate balance between upfront purchases, ongoing maintenance costs, safety for personnel, and reasonable in-service needs. What those two points mean is, is as we talk about, if there, when we do reach a point where there's talk about how do we make adjustments to budgets, when that becomes something that has to happen, we don't want to compromise these things. We want to make sure that our staff, whatever staff we have out there, is adequately trained and equipped to perform their duties. If we're going to make a cut that's going to change something, we will look to eliminate some level of service rather than put someone into a position to try to perform a service We place a priority in maintaining existing equipment, facilities, infrastructure before prioritizing new additional facilities. And bring on new capital projects funded by debt service in a manner that allows debt issues to be paid for in a consistent manner, and ensure that annual usage of debt falls within a planned ladder of issues that keeps us from violating our usage of our debt capacity, threatens our ability to issue future debt, or places our debt levy at too high of a property tax level. This budget is based on a debt service levy of $3.80, which it's been for several years, with a long-term goal to see an average new debt issuance funded by property taxes be at the one and a half to $2 million level funded by a $3 property tax asking. It will take until approximately FY 2023 before we can begin transitioning from that $3.80 that we're currently at down to that more in that $3 range. Some things that have changed, some of these are, even though it's listed under here, things that have changed, there, a lot of them are issues that we've been dealing with, there are just a few more things to talk about with them. The police department, they maintain their existing staffing levels, but one position that was funded through a COPS grant, that funding comes to an end this spring. So as we go into this next budget cycle, we're picking, we'll be picking up the full tab of the position. That comes, that puts the stress on trying to make, make services work. Something that helped with our budget this year, ground emergency medical transport was a bill that was passed at the state level. It provides additional Medicare/Medicaid funding to make up for the, it's a reimbursement through the state from the federal level, to make up for portions of the ambulance bills that, that aren't covered from Medicare/Medicaid. We're looking at about $250,000 this next year, and that really is, it's a projection, it's an estimate. We feel good that it can be in that range, we just don't know until this system is in place whether it's going to be, it could be potentially a tad lower, it could be higher than that as it moves forward. Funding on that, right now, it's anticipated, that bill was passed last year. Their goal was to have the structure in place to have those reimbursements begin July 1, and this budget is based on that occurring. We'll still have to wait and see if that actually comes to fruition or not. The fire department is in their second SAFER grant. That was designed to add six positions to their department. We had done a couple of years ago, the last tax increase that we did funded one of those positions. As we look into FY 20, we start to see a portion of the budget year not at the full reimbursement under that SAFER grant for those six positions. Actually, it's only 65% funding, I think, wasn't it, Matt?
That's what we've been, yeah.
And that will start reducing. It'll have more of an impact, though, as we get into fiscal '21 and '22. Making up the difference on that funding will be difficult, though the ground emergency medical transport funding goes a long ways towards helping us to, to cover those positions. This next year, we'll be transitioning our charge to CTAA members for ambulance service from requiring them to reimburse us for, for their call-based portion of the system cost to charging a per capita fee for service. This will raise their funding for ambulance service slightly, but most importantly, will provide a consistent funding stream to cover the service. The funding that we've gotten through the CTAA has ranged from the 40,000 level up to the 80,000, 85,000 level in that neighborhood over the last few years. This new agreement will have a floor, the first year at 55,000, increasing to, scheduled to increase to 66,000 and then 77,000 in that neighborhood over the next two site, budget Several revenue streams, local option sales tax, hotel motel tax included, have been significantly challenged. One of the major factors with that was the completion of the fertilizer plant south of town. We've had a developer come forward with the desire to potentially purchase two, well, actually has purchased two buildings in the downtown area and convert them to over 100 residential units. As we move forward, we have to make, meet a commitment we had there from a year and a half ago, where we said that we'd meet their parking needs. And we do have funds set aside to, to be able to accomplish that task. The switch to AMF managing auditorium has helped to mitigate our cost to run the facility. Our net cost to operate the auditorium is projected to decrease from 365,000 in FY 18, last year's budget, to 350,000 in fiscal year 20, the budget that we're bringing forward for consideration. The white boxing project for the former Greer's Restaurant space in the northern end of the depot is currently underway. Mr. Marie is hopeful of being in a position to negotiate lease terms for that site in the near future. We've developed initial cost estimates for the Locust Basin of our sewer separation work. About 5.9 million, I think, is actually all in cost. Have some CDBG funds that will help to cover a cost. Five million, over five million for one small portion is a, is a significant amount. If we were to use that same formula for the rest of the market angular south Locust, the Mazel basin, we'd look at pure construction costs in the $90 million range, estimated to be well over 110 million by the time you add in engineering services. We've been working with the DNR last- wow, you're putting that up there, too. We've been working with the DNR to try to negotiate a revision to our timeframe. We're supposed to have the Mazel basin separated by 2025. They've talked about a willingness to work with us on changing our plan of attack on addressing those needs. To try to do $110 million worth of work is, by 2025, we cannot afford in, in any way, shape, or form. They've talked about being willing to do that, but that's something that will be, we've worked for a year with the DNR. Hopefully by, I don't know, we were saying this December, but maybe by this July, we'll have some, some level of acceptance of some, some ideas for some changes to what we're doing. It still won't be a, a new full-out schedule, but at least will be a new approach to how we're doing the sewer separation. All right. Review of overall general fund expenditure budgets and the cost drivers impacting them. It's the next page. You got it there. Overall wages are budgeted to increase 2.25% annually. That matches our employee labor agreements, the salary increases that occur within them. City health insurance costs increasing 5%. They've increased 5% on average every year for the, on the basis of what we've negotiated within our contracts for the last several years. That is one solid strength of the contracts that we do have with our employee groups. They work with us cooperatively in an arrangement to manage our healthcare costs. Pension systems, I-Pers is continuing at 9.44% contribution from the city. That's Iowa Public Employee Retirement System. Our police and fire personnel are on MFPRSI, Municipal Fire Police Retirement System. I'm not sure what the I stands for. The percentage that we put into that is going to decrease from 26.02% to 24.41% of salary. That equates to about a $90,000 decrease in annual expenditures in the general fund from what we had previously projected. Retirement system returns were, were, were good this last year. Can't necessarily say that that is going to be the case this next year. Property liability insurance budgeted to increase 5%. That's following this year's, I have 15%. It's actually reduced a little bit, 12.5%, I think, is what we came up with as a modification after we did this. Non-union wages increasing 2.25% with a transition table. It's similar to, it's to try to be comparable with what we do with the union contracts for our non-union personnel. Transition table tries to help folks move through the transition range, similar to what happens with the steps within the labor agreements. Property tax assessed valuations and revenues based off of them, it says increased 4.5%. We actually had taxable assessed valuation up a little over 4.8% from last year. That's been a major assistance to the general fund when local option sales tax, hotel motel tax have dropped. One thing that we've been able to do to help that growth is releasing TIF valuation. We had used all of our TIF value, well, I don't know how long that would go back, but I know from the time that I arrived up until two years ago, to pay off existing debt. We finally have, have had some flexibility there to do some new projects and release some value back to the underlying taxing entities. That helps our general fund, that helps the school system, that helps the county out. The goal there, and we'll kind of look at some comparisons of how much TIF value we use versus what other communities do as we go in yet tonight. Overall proposed budgeted expenditures in the general fund are about 2.5% higher than last year, and the majority of that is within salaries, personnel costs. Something that I'm happy with, sanitation rates are proposed to stay the same at our current cost structure. The tipping fees, we're not going to increase, or the tipping fees that we have to pay with the, through the Des Moines County Solid Waste Regional, Regional Commission, doggone it, Des Moines County-
Regional Solid-
Regional Solid Waste Commission, DMR, SWC. The tipping fees aren't changing this year. That's the first time in 2000, since 2005-ish range. It's increased a dollar annually every year. This is the first time they haven't had to do it, and that really reflects that they were really behind the, the eight ball with the DNR over some, with closure, post-closure issues, and then getting new cells developed, some requirements that were put on them. They've finally gotten caught up. It's a significant deal for us, it helps us to be able to see, see a little relief within solid waste, helps our whole county to be able to see some. At the same time, though, the recycling fee is still going up to 10 cents per customer per month that we've seen in the past. We think that we can absorb that within our existing rate structure. We're basing that off of the initial signups that we had for the different cart sizes. We'll have to really see, given that we only have two months of data on the new, on the collections from the, the new structure, we don't have a tremendous amount to go on, but that looks, does look like it should, should support us through this next year. We do have enough cash balance, and that's one of the reasons why we want to have 15% cash balance in these different funds, so that you can take the time to have adjustments occur if, if they need to. But sewer and stormwater rates, they're scheduled to increase 3%. They've done that annually for several years, since, well, since I've been here. Before that, they were 9% annually, and we see that moving forward, and it's, that's part of our negotiations with the Department of Natural Resources, the DNR, is to, they're willing to work with us to some extent on phasing work that needs to be done, as long as they see that we are proactively raising rates. So. Other items taken into account as the budget was developed. Well, this note is pretty much the same as last year. We had a request for funding from the Capitol Theater. Last year, it was 20,000 that they were asking for. They didn't receive it last year. This year, they're asking for 15. They wanted some, out of the cultural assistance component of hotel motel tax. It's certainly an appropriate use of this funding source, and it's similar to what we provide to the Art Guild, the 12,250 annually, the Burlington Municipal Band at 3,000 annually, and the Symphony, 3,000 annually. But given the significant declines in hotel motel tax revenue, we're having trouble meeting our current obligations, and I don't recommend taking on any new initiatives in this area. I therefore not included funding for the Capitol Theater in the proposed budget. Now, I don't know, I do have this written in here, Chief, I'm not sure if you're going to address a desire to see the plan brought forward and continued on or not. But that's certainly something that, as you talk about the police budget, he's, he's maintaining existing staffing levels within his budget. They did have the plan two budget cycles ago to bring on two officers per year for three years. It was something that the council was very supportive of at the time, fulfilled the first year's addition of officers. We did not do that last year. The budget that you're going to have proposed to you, again, does not add those two positions. But any discussions that you want to have, I think would be very appropriate to have addressed tonight and talked about as the chief presents his budget. Similar to what we presented last year at this time, the Recplex operations have seen their ongoing revenue decline. One of the factors, again, is the facility down in Fort Madison, there's, it's been in operation for a couple of years. We just have a little bit less participation in, in our leagues, and it has an impact on our overall usage of the facility. We were consistently transferring about 40,000 annually over to the Recplex for support of base operations. We've increased that, it's 70,000 in the current year's budget, and we're looking at 90,000 in, in the, in the budget that's being presented to you tonight, and over the next few weeks. Given that the, the numbers that have been, that we've seen there over the last few years for usage and revenue coming off of it, that's going to increase to 110,000 over, over the five-year budget cycle. It comes out of hotel motel tax. We're seeing a larger and larger portion of hotel motel tax used for support of base operations of these facilities. Have it noted down here, the golf course, too, is another area that we're budgeting to have a subsidy go in there, 15,000 a year. We may find that not all years do we need that. We may find that those numbers are a little bit different as we move forward, but based off of where we, we're at right now, those look like fairly solid numbers for what needs to be in there to support them. In fact, I'm not sure that the golf course, if that's enough to, to meet where the, what their track or trend is right now. I think that that would probably be a good source of discussion as Mr. Tisland talks about the recreation programming, about where things stand in usage and what that's supporting, having, if there's any level of concern as we move forward. We're able to make everything work right now, but again, as you move forward, there's an increasing level of support needed to make some of these operations be successful. You have a lot more sheets back behind this. I'm going to try something different here. We'll see if it works or not. You have them as, as background material, and the slides kind of, that we're going to go off with a PowerPoint are going to be, to some extent, based off of, of those sheets. The first thing I want to do is remind the council the financial policies that we've, we have in place. We did a major revision of the financial policies in 2012, made a couple of modifications, I think, in 2015, and again in 2016, Stephanie? I don't know if you can remember or not, but I'm not good with the timing on when those were done, but there's some significant things in there. Within our financial policies, and you may not, you probably don't have a copy, they're certainly not in the book that you have before you, but they are in the budget document that you got last year, and they will be in the budget document that we have again this year, and if you need to get a, would like to see a copy, because you don't have it handy or available, we can certainly get you one. There are several components. It asks for, it, I think there's like 35 sep-, no, there's a little bit more than that, 36, 37 policies that are written into that. Policy number seven within the financial policies talks about a balanced budget. The budget that we're presenting over the next few meetings is a balanced budget. We have the, the primary fund, the general fund is one that revenues that are to be received are about 50,000 higher than expenditures to be expensed, and helps us to stay on track with that 15% fund balance. But I would, it would behoove you to read through what's written within policy seven of that, of the overall financial policy. It lists steps necessary to achieve a budget balance if we, if we have some shortfalls, and it talks about the different things that we will do if there's a, a potential problem. It lists things like reduction in services. talks about improved productivity, shift expenses to other parties. That may be something that, that needs to be reviewed as we move forward. Some, one of the things, as we've changed the ambulance structure with the CTAA, the city township ambulances, I don't, I hate trying to remember what different things stand for. This is a change in the structure there, trying to, to get a little bit more stable source from them, and trying over time to have a path where everyone understood how we're going to see a little bit larger funding source come in from that, from that entity. And it's part of why, is, I think that as we move through the next couple of months, Chief Trucks will be presenting a comparable arrangement with Henderson County in Illinois. Talks about creating new service fees or increasing existing fees, reducing or eliminating services, or seeking tax increases. There's a series of steps it talks about. To kind of point that out, because the financial policies that we have as a community are supposed to be theirs for something that we can review at a time when things aren't, when you don't have a hot issue pushing on us, and making sure that we have a level head about how are we going to go about addressing a problem? How are we going to go about addressing this issue that we have before us? Make sure that it stays in conformity with our plan. Talks about establishing adequate fund balances. That's policy number 13 for working fund balance. We've gotten to the 15% fund balance in the general fund. We've had it in the road use tax fund and local option, local option sales tax and hotel motel tax. We have several funds that are listed there that should be and aren't. The parking fund, Flint Hills Golf Course, Recplex, those have been funds that, well, five years ago, were several hundred thousand in the hole. We've gotten to even, but we still have not gotten to that 15% working cash balance in those areas. Part of having to transfer, go from the hotel motel tax to the Recplex and the golf course is making sure that we are putting ourselves in a position, long-term, to try to build up those fund balances, not just maintain operations, but build up those fund balances to make sure that we're in line with what our, our policies say that we'll do. Our policies talk about developing a capital improvement plan. That'll be presented on Monday night. It reflects a lot of the, the equipment and project priorities that have been developed from staff, from the comp plan, from council discussions, from just things that have been already ongoing to make sure that we're moving forward. Debt structure, use of debt limit. We have a policy in here. Policy 22 talks about making sure that we don't use all of our debt capacity. The state gives us a defined amount of general obligation debt, debt that's backed by the full faith and credit of the community. They say that no more than 5% of your overall val, city property valuation can be in, in an amount that's indebted. We've set aside a policy that says we will only use 70% of that amount. So we have, as we've worked on developing a CIP plan, we want to make sure that we take on projects that keep us within that debt amount, and the CIP plan that's, that you'll have before you does do that. We've had a lot of discussion over the last year over the TIF policy. Well, we have a lot of TIF policies in place, and it would be, probably would, I'd recommend that you take a look through policies 28 through 34 of our financial management policies, and just get a flavor of what's already there in place for what we can and what we've said that we will or won't do- And just get a, a flavor of what's already there in place for what we can and what we've said that we will or won't do with the usage of TIF. The usage of TIF that's part of our comprehend- or part of our CIP plan that we'll be looking at through this budget cycle is in conformity with the policies that are in, that are listed in, in our financial management policies. So we try to make sure that we keep ourselves in line where we can with these. And to the most extent, we've done a pretty good job. We, we aren't where we need to be. But we've progressively gotten closer to where we, where we said we'd like to be with these policies. General fund cash balance history. You can look back in two thousand ten to twelve period. In fact, if you were to go through the decade of the two thousands, that cash balance would hover down there in that six hundred thousand dollar range that it did those first three years. The general fund cash balance has grown and does this have a pointer? Is that red button? I've never, I'm not into that. Our current proposed year is the top of that little bell curve. That's our proposed budget. The cash balance is, is proposed to grow a tad bit, staying and keeps us at that fifteen percent. Doggone it, cash reserve, cash balance. But projections for the out years, maintaining existing services, looking at what projected costs, how they'll increase over time, looking at our sal- our, our contracts, how our revenues are projected it to, projected to increase. If we don't make changes, if there's something that doesn't come in different than what we've, than what the current trend is, we're going to have an issue as we move into the next couple of years. We'll start seeing that cash balance come down in the future. Again, not a problem for the, the current year, but as we move forward into the next couple of budget cycles, there could be more headwinds. Debt usage percentage, said that we would, we have a financial policy that will maintain, will, will not go above seventy percent of our debt usage being used. Back in that two thousand ten to twelve timeframe was when these policies were originally developed. Actually, as we did fiscal year two thousand thirteen's budget was when we were doing this. We were a little over eighty percent des- debt usage. The budget you have before you has us below that seventy percent mark. Dang it. I'm not very good with this.
I was just getting ready to say that, James. You're not very good with that.
So our proposed budget is right around sixty-two percent. We do see that going up next, next year up to the seventy percent level. What really has us pushing up there towards that seventy percent level now has been the flood wall projects. Those were things that we looked at as sales, sales tax from the state to, to fund, but we still had to finance and it does go against our debt usage capacity. We're not violating it though with our five-year CIP plan. As we talk about budgets during the course of the next few weeks, what we talk about the majority of the time is the general fund. The general fund covers the basic operations of the community. Our fire services are in here, police services, building services, recreational programs, the library are all in here. Public Works, their general operations like the engine, the building itself, public works administration, engineering are all in here. You'll see transit located in here. The funding that we provide for the airports in here, our general administration, finance, accounting, HR, et cetera, are all included in this area as well. These are categories, the fund structure that we have up here, it's not unique to us. This is a structure that's been put on us from the state to, to classify funds into different, to classify how we bring money in and how we spend money into different categories. That general fund again is where we have the most cap- most flexibility. The special revenue. That first one, road use tax, it's a road use tax collections, state gas tax. We've received money from the state. They allow us to use that, but they tell us you have to use this on road services. So when Nick presents his budget, you'll see the areas of your general street operations, maintaining our street lights throughout the city, the traffic signals is in there and our snowplow operations are all funded out of road use tax. And we actually do put a little bit towards some four hundred towards the seal coating on an annual basis as well. TIF is probably one of the larger areas within here. Tax increment financing is, we have to make sure that we keep this bucket. We bring revenue in and spend it out. When you see that idea of a special revenue fund, it's, all of them are designed to make sure that when you bring money into that account, you only spend it on the things that are supposed, that are, that they tell you you can spend it on. Local option sales tax and hotel motel tax are ones that we have to make sure that we spend as we told the people that during, when we went out for a vote on those funds, that we would spend them and also meet the, stay within the guidelines of how the state requires us to spend them as well. Debt service fund. All of our general obligation debt, any project that is funded with the full faith and credit of the city is funded through there. We'll have TIF projects where we'll borrow money. We'll bring the money into the TIF fund under that special revenue area and then we'll have to transfer it over into a different bucket into the debt service fund to make the debt payment out of, because it's mo- the majority of our debt that's TIF is general obligation bonds backed by the full faith and credit of the city. We'll see similar things. Some of our sewer debt is issued as general obligation debt. Some of it's issued as revenue debt. Ends up at being at a higher interest, but it doesn't count in its star debt capacity. So those are some of the thoughts that we have in mind as we figure out how we're going to bond for things. Enterprise funds, those are kind of like business operations. They're designed to have revenue come in to support the expenditures that are associated with them. And that's why you see parking, golf, the Recplex, solid waste, wastewater, stormwater funds in there. Self-insurance. For those not familiar, that is an area we partially self-insure, well, yeah, partially self-insure our workers' comp compensation. So we'll collect money from the different areas where we have employees, whether that's in the general fund, the street crew that's in the road use tax fund, employees who are paid for out of the Recplex or solid waste or the sewer, wastewater, they'll contribute into that self-insurance fund and pay our workers' comp bills out of that area. So we try to make sure that we maintain operations there on a long-term basis. We won't cover too much here at the council level, our permanent funds, our trust and agency funds, but those are funds that are set aside for a specific purpose. The library is a, what, probably the largest fund that we have in that area, Stephanie? That we, we keep on our books. That's money that, and that's an example where money has been either, either raised or generated to support specifically the library. It's not for regular operations of the city. We have some base expenditures that we put within our budget to make sure that we account for the expenditures, but they're not things that we really have control over per se. And then capital projects funds, the majority of our street work, a lot of our buildings will be expensed and shown in our books in our capital project stuff. And then we have our, those are all listed under budgetary funds. And then we have things that the state says that we classify as non-budgetary funds. There are departments within the city, property maintenance and vehicle maintenance, but they don't show up on our budget books. And that's, not that we're hiding anything, but that's how the state show, tells us to do it. They're funded for out of operations, they're expensed into the different departments that use our services. So what are the challenges that we face as a community? We're shrinking town, have aging infrastructure, limited resources. See up there, what's happened with lost hotel motel, sales tax. And I'll say the couple others there, multi-residential property tax reduction and backfill for commercial industrial property. Population. You look over the decades, we were a growing community back in the forties and fifties. Since then, every decade has seen a decline in population. The sixties was a twenty percent decline. This most, since two thousand ten, the estimates would put it at about a five percent decline. Going along with that, I don't have a slide on it, but kind of a related thing, our income. Average household, the median household income in Burlington is about forty thousand. Statewide average is fifty-five thousand. We're about seventy-three percent of the statewide average for income. We're seventy-five percent of the, the United States average. Poverty level. Our poverty level as a community, twenty-one percent of our population lives in poverty. For perspective, twelve point three percent of the Iowa population lives in poverty. We're not twice the state average, but we're up in, into that neighborhood. Those are issues that have significant an impact on our ability on an ongoing basis to, to make things work. And they have to, that's just a context, but it has to be kept in mind as we think about what our ability is to meet service requests. Local option sales tax collection. Look at that. We were up at four point four, almost four point six million dollars in revenue collected in two thousand seven, fiscal year two thousand seventeen. We run July one to June thirtieth. The current year is fiscal two thousand nineteen is three point eight million. Going on, on a swing of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is difficult to budget for without having adequate reserves. And it has led to a significant impact on the ability to fund projects as we present the CIP. Hotel motel tax collection has been similar. It was up at a million, nine hundred ninety thousand in two, two thousand sixteen. Last year we were at, I should have had it written down because the graph doesn't show it too well, seven eighty. I have it, I have us being just ahead of that, maybe up to eight hundred thousand this year. We've only had one quarterly payment so far, but looking at comparisons year over year would put us at about eight hundred thousand. It'd be nice to be able to say that we've seen a bottoming of that reduction on the hotel motel tax. It'd be nice to see that start to slowly rebound and we budgeted for it to slowly start to move back up. Cable TV franchise is one we, that goes into the general fund. We were at about three hundred thousand on an annual basis. MediaCom asked to redo their contract with us. They had a franchise agreement with us. They went under a statewide franchise agreement. And you, we saw a significant decline from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen result. We're budgeting now two hundred and forty thousand. We were budgeting three hundred thousand. And that's, if anything, will be declining as time goes on, as people move to alternative media as opposed to cable. We talked about that flood mitigation sales tax the state gave us, twenty-six point two million. Had a schedule, if you look at the blue for the years, had a schedule how they, how we anticipated that that money was going to come in. Two thousand sixteen, we're looking for two hundred and fifty thousand to come in and we got that full two hundred and fifty thousand. The following year, we looked for four hundred thousand to come in. And we were on pace through, we were ahead of schedule. We had almost all of it through the first two quarters and then sales tax collections plummeted. And that really coincides with the, the plant being, getting completed. But you look then at the following years, two thousand eighteen, the year we just finished it, a little over five hundred thousand and we're close to seven hundred thousand expected the current year. Last year we only got thirty thousand, or I'm sorry, forty thousand and I hope that we get that this year. Well, we've already done a project that was based off of the, this money coming in. That's a significant issue. And we can make that work for the next couple of budget cycles, but if we don't see a change in sales tax collections, it's going to have a significant impact in the, or could have a significant impact on our ability to fund with a debt service levy additional work beginning in two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. We'll see what happens as time goes on. But it has had an impact and it'll come up as we talk about the CIP plan again next week. Backfill. Back in two thousand thirteen, the state was going to keep us whole. They wanted to be able to provide an incentive for
That's why I like you doing this. You always have to be the bearer of bad news, man.
They want, they had the promise to keep us whole for some changes that they wanted to make within this, the tax situation that, that business and industry faced. They felt that this would have a significant boon for the, for the state as a whole to reduce the taxes that would, that corporations, both commercial and industrial would have to face to, to do business in Iowa. They promised the cities that they would make us whole for that, that they would, that they would keep us from losing funds. Because it was their issue, it was their desire to provide an incentive to business and industry. It's an ongoing, permanent allocation within the state's budget. This year, we're projected to receive five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But there's a lot of discussion that's gone over, that's, that went this last session to phase out the backfill. Phasing out is a, a significant deal for us. It's five hundred and thirty thousand. So as you talk about with state legislatures and they talk about saying we can eliminate that backfill amount over the next five years, how many people does that mean? Five hundred and thirty thousand, what level of service does that mean to our community if we're eliminating it without raising property taxes? It's a significant issue for us. Backfill though, doesn't make up for one of the major components that was part of that two thousand thirteen legislation. Multi-family property tax reductions. They saw, multi-family properties saw their taxes reduced as part of that package and there was no backfill to, to help make up for that. For us, right now in the, in the budget that's before you for the fiscal year twenty budget, multi-residential property taxes or properties have seen their taxable value go down from a hundred percent to the seventy-five percent. And it'll go down to the residential amount, match single-family properties. It has an impact on us. If that bill hadn't gone through at a state level in, in two thousand thirteen, we'd have two hundred thousand more dollars in the general fund to support operations. It's a significant impact on our ability to, to continue services without seeing property tax increases. There's no right or wrong of that. That's just part of the landscape that we work in. But what has happened with property taxes? The mayor came on in two thousand twelve. The first budget Mayor McCambell was a part of, he raised property taxes from fifteen oh one to fifteen oh five.
I don't appreciate what you're saying right now, brother.
And it was seen as a significant increase at the time. And we had to do some major changes after that. And going back to the, I think, one of the earliest, earlier slides, the general fund cash balance being down at five hundred thousand and, and going up to three million over the last eight years. It, it is specifically because of, no, I'm not going to point that, am I? It's specifically because of that property tax increase we did in two thousand fourteen. We did that to eliminate the deficits that we had on, at the time. We had eight million dollars of deficit accounts. We financed it through, through a combination of issuing new, a new debt service for for capital projects that had never been financed and making some radical cuts to operations. We were trying to do that with the franchise fee as well. When the franchise fee didn't occur, we came back in two thousand fifteen and increased taxes again and held them there for three years. We had to change for fiscal year two thousand eighteen occur and that was to fund uh, an additional position, the fire department, a couple of positions in the police, two, the two new positions in the police department and a part-time position, the nuisance. There's, felt that there was a need to address public safety concerns across the spectrum. And that was a specific reason for that property tax increase. The budget that you have before you doesn't incre- doesn't increase that tax levy. It's maintaining the existing levy. I do wanna talk about where we, where we sit in comparison to other towns. This is a listing of all communities, twenty thousand of population and above. If you look through the list of the communities, it has their taxable value per capita. Nice, easy table to read, I know. Uh, Burlington is, uh, has, there's twenty-eight thousand of assessed valuation per person in the, in the community. We are the third lowest amount. The lowest is Atumwa. Atumwa, Fort Dodge are twenty-three and twenty-seven thousand. What's the highest? Maybe uh, West Des Moines at eighty-four thousand? The ability to fund services in West Des Moines where you have eighty-four thousand dollars worth of valuation per person is, it's not even, it's not the same discussion that we have to have in a community that has very little property tax value to back our services. So we are well below average. We're uh, maybe two-thirds of the average valuation per person. And that's part of the reason why when you look at the tax levy, the average levy in, across these twenty-two cities is fourteen dollars and ninety cents. Ours is at sixteen thirty-four. We're well above it. And if you look at what's, what's the primary culprit there, it's our debt service levy. The average debt service levy of these communities is two dollars and seventy-four cents and we're at three eighty. I'd say even though we can afford to do what we're doing at that three eighty levy, we're, and we had to get to that back in two thousand thirteen to address our financial issues. And we have to have it there through twenty twenty-three. Kind of had a, a cliff of our debt that was outstanding back that, at that point. At that, when we get to that twenty twenty-three timeframe, we need to be taking efforts to try to get this back down to where that debt service levy is in line with our other towns as we can. It's not that it comes back overnight, but we need to proactively start seeing that come down. This is kind of a, another comparison of that. Burlington is off to the right. It was the seventh from the end. Two-thirds of the way over and you can kinda see a little bit of a, of a curve with that. And you can kinda look at a, at a community, if you get moving to the right too far, it escalates fairly quickly if you're, if you don't keep it under control. But there are some different issues here within uh, towns that are population-based twenty thousand to thirty thousand. These seven towns, all population twenty to thirty thousand. A unique situation. We're large enough to have transit services, large enough to have rental inspections, uh, large enough to have uh, fully staffed and professional fire departments along with um, the police department. It comes with a higher level of service, but a smaller, but we don't have enough population base to spread the costs across, the costs across. Um, when you look at our, how we compare here, we're more in line with what our average community is. We all face the same issues. But again, our debt service levy is still elevated above the remainder. Average debt usage. That second call, second number call or percentage column, percent of our debt capacity used, we're at sixty-five percent. The average community, those towns, all communities in the state, twenty thousand population and above, average usage is at that forty-four percent level. You look at our Moody's bond rating, out of the, out of the cities that have a Moody's bond rating, we are eight, we're listed A two and I don't wanna try to pretend to know how Moody's bonds ratings work. But if there's a rank order in there, uh, we're the lowest ranked community of anyone up there. Having two A's is much better than having one A. Being A one is better than A two. We're still considered a, a very solid community. We're, we're uh, those are good ratings, but comparatively, you know, all Iowa ratings are, are good. We're, we're a good part of the country when Moody's looks at, at communities, but when we look at our peers across the state, our ratings aren't that, aren't that hot. And that's really not a fault of ours. As we talked, as I'm, I mean, the percentage of debt capacity that we used is part of it. But I mean, our per capita general debt, it's right in line with what everywhere, every other town there is facing, right around fifteen hundred dollars per person. Our total debt, that includes debt for, say sewer revenue projects, pro- um, are included in that. We're below the average. You'll look at a community like Fort Dodge, forty-five hundred dollars of debt per person. The things that hurt us when it comes to Moody's, our percentage of folks in poverty, our income being at seventy, our median household income being seventy-five percent of the state and national average. We can't afford to do the things that other towns do. We can afford to do things, we just have to be careful and, and be selective. We can't afford to do everything. We face a different landscape than what a lot of other towns do. An Urbandale or an Ames has a whole lot more flexibility to think about what they are doing for operations than what we do. Property tax receipts have continued to climb. We saw our valuation grow. When I arrived in two thousand twelve, our fifteen-year uh, valuation history saw one point one percent annual growth in property valuation. Property valuation drives our ability to fund the, the city. Since, if we look at a ten-year history now, our average is two point two percent, doubled what it was just a decade ago. Primarily, that's been growth in the re- residential valuations and people, a lot of people have complained about the valuations that they've seen. But when we look at what our overall valuations are, we see residential growing, we see commercial and industrial. If I were to look at where we were ten years ago, it's pretty flat. It's almost the same as what it was ten years ago. Very limited growth in commercial industrial. It's all in residential and it's, that's limited our ability to um, again, fund operations. So, the budget that you have and your sheets that you have in there, you have a lot of sheets that have line items. In the budget has a breakdown of revenues and expenditures. This is more of a summation and you can look through the details at your leisure. Uh, the details. How many line items do we have, Stephanie? And that's, that's one that I, I hesitate to have you get caught up in, but I think we have ten thousand line items in our budget. And so getting down to that kind of granularity uh, makes no sense. But to talk about some overall um, things. Our general fund, I mentioned that that's the primary pot that we have, where we have the most flexibility. We're looking at revenues in this next fiscal year twenty uh, budget, twenty million, eight hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and nine dollars. Property taxes is pretty self-explanatory at six point eight million. The other taxes, just to let you know, that's made up of uh, the cable franchise fee that we, or cable tax that we talked about, the hotel motel tax comes into the general fund and it's one of the fun, funkiest things that we have to deal with. We received it into the general fund. We transfer it out to the special revenue fund. And then it goes, is distributed out of the special revenue hotel motel tax fund back to wherever we're gonna use it. It's what we have to do to try to comply with state statutes. And then our riverboat gambling fees are kinda broken down. Uh, we, the riverboat gambling fees are, there's two different pieces. There's a per head fee and then I'm not sure what the classification is of the other. By the agreement, it's been in place for decades or, well, at least well before I was here. There's two hundred thousand of the revenue that we receive from gambling uh, is in other taxes. Uh, three hundred and sixty-five thousand is in the licenses and permits. So licenses and permits as a category is essentially that and then building permits. Uh, intergovernmental is things such as uh, our transit receives seven hundred thousand a year for support from the state and federal government. We received the safer grant from the federal government for two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, ground emergency medical transport will come. It's federal funds that'll come from the state, two hundred. Townships provide this money uh, in other cities. We get about a hundred and fifty thousand for uh, fire department support. And uh, in the general fund, about forty thousand of what the CPAA pays for supports the ambulance operations. And then we see um, intergovernmental is also between entities such as the schools, so the SRO officers. The reimbursement we receive from the schools is located in there about a hundred and twelve thousand. Charges for services, do I have that somewhere? The lion's share of that is ambulance. If it's two million overall, one point four million of that's for ambulance. Uh, three hundred and fifty is engineering. Uh, engineering, we expense our personnel in the general fund, but we charge out to their, for their time on different projects, whether it's this, right now, the, the one they're working on this year would probably, agency would receive a, a significant amount. Uh, Mount Pleasant Street would be receiving a significant amount this year. And uh, some of the sewer projects as well will receive uh, charges to reimburse the general fund for the work that they've done. Transfers in, I would note, that's a third of the revenues, so it's kind of a catch-all. Three point four million of that is property taxes for employee benefits. Or, yeah, for employee bene- no, I'm sorry, two point seven million is property tax for employee benefits and emergency levy. Three point four is local option sales tax. I would point out, local option sales tax, if we collect three point eight million and three point four million of it's coming in to support the general fund, it's supporting basic operations. Local option sales taxes due to, to expire at the end of this, of twenty twenty-two. That'll be, to me, that's one of the most significant issues that's out there on the horizon to be able to maintain uh, our operations in the future. It's not an issue for this year, but it's one that is looming uh, for renewal. It, we've uh, gone through one renewal election in two thousand twelve. The original was put in place for ten years, the renewal was for ten years and there'll have to be a discussion about what we're looking at for uh, the future. Local option sales tax, half of that money is designed to be what's called property tax relief. Meaning we could be, we, people may say we pay a, a high property tax amount. We could theoretically be paying more. We could raise our property tax levy, the equivalent of that two million dollars that we transfer over from local option sales tax to cover our employee benefits that we've chosen not to. I don't know how to, I don't know any way that we could fundamentally raise taxes that much, but some other communities have. The remainder of that, the majority of it is coming from the proprietary funds, meaning the sewer fund, the solid waste. Uh, they support general fund operations primarily for the administrative services to cover uh, payroll, to cover keeping track of the books and um, human resources, those, those types of functions. So twenty million, eight hundred and sixty thousand revenue against twenty million twenty million, eight hundred and sixty thousand in revenue, twenty million, eight hundred and four thousand in expenditure. So there's some, there's some uh, flexibility in there. If you look at what this is funding, that graph doesn't work too well, but public safety is sixty percent of it. Fire, police and code enforcement actually, within Eric's area, falls in that area. The majority of what we spend uh, in the general fund is for public safety. And if we are in a position where we're having to deal with making alterations to try to make us to, to get our general fund whole, it would be one of the, the primary areas that we'd have to talk about. The breakdown by department, some of the key ones, again, fire department, five point six million. The police department, six point four million that we'll be talking about tonight. Uh, development, Eric, uh, both uh, the rental and nuisance and uh, planning and zoning functions are eight hundred thousand. The library at one point four million. Auditorium, four hundred thousand. Other culture and rec, that other culture and rec covers our uh, parks. The forestry department to maintain our trees in the parks as well as along the right away. Uh, the swimming pool, all fit in that area. Transit, we've kinda talked about as a million dollar operation. Uh, airport, we provide a, a ta- property tax levy on an ongoing basis. It stays steady. This year, that tax asking is raising a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to transfer over. And general government at one point eight million. The only transfer we have from the general fund elsewhere is, again, we receive hotel motel tax revenue in the general fund, have to transfer it over to that other account and then expense it out of there. Huh, I'm done. I went too long.
Yes.
I guess the key thing though, overall, as just a general budget, as the different departments present to you over the course of the next few weeks, I think the overriding thing, we're able to maintain our existing property tax asking, the same levy. We're not raising, we're not lowering. We're able to maintain our existing level of services with a balanced budget. So with that, I'll turn it over for the police department to make their presentation. Actually, any questions though, before we do that on?
I have one.
Yep.
What was the reason for the increase to the recplex?
So if you have revenues that are staying flat or declining a little bit and your costs continue to go up, your personnel costs is what, I mean, any fun, any function that we have across our system, personnel costs is a driving factor. If they're increasing two and a quarter percent annually, uh, health insurance increasing five percent, it just, it has an impact.
So the twenty thousand dollar increase budgeted for this year was
Not just personnel. It's not personnel. It's a large part of that. It's just the fact, it is reflective of the fact that uh, revenues just aren't there. This last year, we would have had a larger transfer, have to go into, into the recplex and what did. We were originally looking at, last year was it seventy thousand and then we reduced it. They were able to collect uh, a major sponsorship, that's like thirty thousand of ex- extra revenue. That isn't an ongoing annual amount. Otherwise, the, what we have in this, this, the FY twenty budget would be pretty reflective of what we would need. It'd be more of a, a trend that we were right on. The big cliff happened three years ago. And really, it was when uh, Fort Madison's facility came on and we lost a significant amount of folks from the, from the area that were here. And you just lose a couple of, it doesn't take too much for uh, you lose a couple of teams and even once you lose a couple of teams from one, you, you went through it last year. You, if you have a league that doesn't have a whole lot of teams and you lose one or two, you, you threaten the whole league's existence. So, and we've seen the factor too. We had a decision made, uh, council decided four or five years ago to do away with the token revenue. Uh, we were using a, giving a token away when you went in and using that towards concessions. A cost-cutting move that was a decision made from the council was to do away with those tokens. And that had, I think it's had a And that had, I think it's had a significant impact on their concession revenue.
So a positive or negative?
Negative. It, it cost us more money than it saved. That was not a, that was not a move that helped us out. And one of the things that we have to be careful of, the Recplex is one, the golf course is another. Just because our costs of operations go up, doesn't mean that we can afford to change, change our fee structure and, and go to a higher fee. We have to still maintain a competitive fee that keeps us from being realistic with the other uh venues in the area with uh other options people have for entertainment.
Does it make sense to bring back the token?
That's one that we've talked about.
So we'll talk about?
We'll talk about it during this, yes.
You guys did?
Is that good?
Yeah, no, you answered my question.
Chief. Please hurry before Jim gets started again.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief.
All right, I, um, hopefully I can follow that presentation maybe with a little bit more uh sunshine.
Let the sun shine, my friend.
So, uh, I will be asking for some things. I got some advice from Don back there, he said to get everybody's attention, I should shoot three times. And uh?
As long as you're shooting in Don's direction.
He wouldn't, he wouldn't tell me which direction, so I think I'm gonna forego that advice as being bad advice.
Well, you get your picture in the paper after.
So, um. During this uh preparation, or preparation for this budget season, this is, this is my first presentation. So hopefully it'll go as smooth as it has in the past for Chief Beard. Um, he did leave me with uh some information, good information, and I helped him in the past years uh for the presentation, so it should be fairly similar. I'll present the overall budget uh and some figures there. Hopefully my figures match up with what has been given to me and what Jim has. There may be some minor discrepancies, but overall, it should be uh very similar. Uh, I'm sure the city manager will let me know if my figures are way off. So, uh, the staffing overview, just to give you an overview of what the staff looks like at the police department, it has changed just a little bit. Uh, the overall police operations, uh, capital items and uh the uh operational enhancements. So, um, and, and uh when I say operational enhancement, enhancements, that's kind of what I'll be asking for, uh, looking to do, uh, reasons why, where we were at, where we're going, and uh what's happening in the operation. I'm gonna hit some of the highlights here. The overall budget, uh, as Jim said, was six point four million. I noticed his figure was just a little bit different, but it's around that six point four million. I may have some things figured in there or, or looked at the wrong line, but that's where it's at. Patrol operations, four point five uh million, uh, which is the, the, the basis of the department is the patrol operations. Uh, that includes all the officers outside of administration. And administration, and I'm gonna touch on this a little bit further on in the presentation, is nine hundred and, nine hundred and fifteen thousand uh roughly. And, and I'm gonna touch on that uh for some reasons and it'll kind of explain why that seems so high. It also includes records and uh custodial staff. And records, uh, my administrative assistants in there, uh, the records department and uh some others are figured into that. Uh, the DESCOM annual contribution, I want to talk briefly about that. It's, it's six hundred and ninety thousand and that's a figure that we pay for that service to DESCOM, which was an entity that was created a few years ago to be a standalone entity that used to be part of the police department. It's included in my budget, but it encompasses all public safety. And as you know, public safety is not just us, it's the fire department also. So that figure goes into my budget, so it changes just a little bit. I'd like to split it with them, but um, that's, that's why I explained it that way. Not throwing you out of the budget.
That's right, keep the party going, chief.
Um, the other one is the task force. Hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, a lot of that is uh personnel cost is what it is uh for the task force. It kind of passes through, we do have a grant, a burn jag grant that we uh get funds for. We try to estimate how much we're gonna get, I think last year it was thirty-three thousand, split three ways. We had one of those uh entities kind of leave, so I'll explain that a little bit further on down.
Three ways between?
Us, the county, and West Burlington. And I'll, I'll get into that a little bit later, I have a, another slide that kind of goes over that. Uh, parking enforcement, uh, I think Jim covered that pretty much. It's a part-time uh position uh with some other uh things that we, we have uh in those line items for um, I guess commodities that she would use. Uh, Jim kind of alluded to the three-year staffing plan. Uh, there was two officer, two officers uh that were added in, I think it was fiscal year eighteen, a couple of years ago, the two officers were added. Bringing our uh personnel, sworn personnel from forty-three to forty-five. Uh, and that cops funding, uh, is basically gonna end here in March of nineteen, where we will end up receiving all the funds that were allocated for that funding. Um, I will be talking to you a little bit about uh in fiscal year twenty, adding two additional officers per the, per the staffing plan. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow those guidelines and it'll, it'll kind of explain it. And Jim is, uh, in his presentation, talked about a hundred thousand dollars uh per new officer, which is, he's right in that uh ballpark there, so. And that's, that's the plan as it was laid out a couple of years ago by Chief Beard and presented. Uh, some other things that you'll notice on there, the reserve officers. Uh, currently we have, uh, it's listed on there as five, uh, we currently have three. We have a couple of officers that were on, uh, we've trained them, uh, they've since, um, one of them's moved out of the area and, and left the other, the other one, um, resigned from the reserve program. So, we're back in the process of trying to get that back to five uh this fiscal year. Uh, we have one applicant that has gone through the background investigation, so that should be coming back up to a level of four over the course of the next year. But it takes us two years to get them uh trained. I have two reserve officers that are capable of coming down and taking a squad car, going out and handling calls for service uh by themselves. So, uh, which is a good thing and they're, and uh they're both very quality individuals that uh are outstanding in the community and, and they do a lot for our reserve program. So, we have two outstanding ones, hoping to add more. And when I put that figure seven in there in fiscal year twenty, that's gonna take a lot of work to get it to that. So, we're still trying to work to it, we ask for applications and work through that process every year and we'll continue to do that, to try to add that, that uh, those officers to the department just to help. Um, down here under the records clerk supervisor, administrative assistant, I put it at four point seven and I talked to the city manager and, and uh, I'm gonna uh kind of talk to you a little about, a little bit about it. Uh, that point seven is a part-time. Back in two thousand twelve, uh, we were at three full-time clerks, uh, and one part-time at that time. And, and he talked a little bit about some changes uh with funding and things like that. And so we went from uh three point seven there, or four point seven with the, with their supervisor, down to four. And we've been there ever since. Well, we've added two officers to the department, which increases the dictation, which is, increases, you know, the report filing, things of that nature and the calls for service. So they're constantly uh still busy. So, and eight years ago, when that one part-time position was cut, we was at forty-one officers. Uh, so now we're at a, a level of forty-five. So, uh, that will be an ask here later on and I'll talk a little bit more about it. Police operations, I have ten command officers, of course myself, one major, four lieutenants and four sergeants. When I was appointed as chief, um, the structure of the department was kind of uh set up a little bit different. And I have uh one major instead of two and I've, I've moved that position to a lieutenant's position there. So, uh, I have the major of the patrol and investigation operations, he runs the entire operations and the administrative services that was done by, by one of the majors. Done by the lieutenant. Uh, and some of those still, things still remain with the major of patrol and operations, but for the most part, that lieutenant takes care of that. Uh, two twelve-hour shifts consisting of four squads, A, B, C, and D. And I have uh one sergeant and I put five to six officers on day shift, five to six on night shift, because that varies depending on where we move those personnel to and who's coming and going. And once you, once you see the organizational chart, you'll see uh the vacancies that we have and why they're vacant. Lieutenant on day shift, night shift, and a lieutenant of administrative, administrative services like I talked about, and then the pop unit. And I'll talk a little bit more about the pop unit here on, later on, the, the, from the cops grant that we had funded, those two positions that were given back in two thousand eighteen and what we utilize those for and the importance of those. Uh, the criminal investigation division, that division was being run by uh one lieutenant and we used to have three detectives, we got that back to uh four detectives, which is invaluable when it comes to some of the major investigations that we've had to, had to deal with and uh the work that they do. The task force, uh, that shows up there, one detective from our department, uh, one from the sheriff's department, and I put in there one vacant position when, at the beginning of this fiscal year in July, uh, West Burlington uh had an officer there that is in the guard and got an opportunity and went, uh, was deployed uh from, for one to three years. They came to us and said they need their officer back there and have taken the officer back to West Burlington. There's no intentions of them to come back for this fiscal year. Uh, we have made an amendment to that grant, so that, so that those funds that are drawn down for that thirty-three thousand comes half and half now, half to uh the Burlington Police Department and half to the Sheriff's Department. So, um, I know that's not very much overall when you're talking about over a hundred thousand dollars in that uh, in that program, but we take what we can get and move forward. With that being said, the next application that we have to uh fill out, we're only gonna be able to probably do that with two departments. And I know from experience, when I wrote the grant as a lieutenant, that they're not very excited about having the smaller groups as part of their application process and successfully getting money out of that grant program. So that's been a conversation before, so I'm really leery of what this, this next fiscal year's gonna hold for us. Because that grant application is due, I believe, at April first and it usually comes about, it comes out about the middle of May. So I'll know before the next fiscal year starts in July, but I don't know what the, what the amount's gonna be. I don't, I hope it's more than thirty-three thousand, but it's not gonna cover the cost that's listed here. The SRO is two full-time officers, uh, the high school one is funded a hundred percent, the middle school one is funded forty-five percent, and the K-nine unit, uh, I put him in there, uh, he's part of the patrol operations as one full-time uh night shift officer. The organizational chart kind of changed a little bit, the police chief used to be at the top, uh, and, and it still is. And then I had, uh, there was two majors in there, now there's one major and it kind of runs uh that, that direction with the Major Grimshaw being uh in charge of uh the lieutenants and it kind of uh trickles down from there. Some of the uh things that I talked about was right there, you'll see a vacant spot. To have six officers on each squad is the, is the ideal, because on a squad, on any given day, we like to re- remain at a four uh person shift strength with one command officer. So we'll have five officers on, that includes the command staff. But uh with six, I can have five officers on and a shift commander, that brings it to six, because one will inevitably be taking vacation or have a day off, just as the way with, with that many officers as it rotates through. So those vacancies that you see right here and here, and then look over here under the FTO program. Uh, probationary officer Gallegos and Nan just got out of the academy and are going through our FTO program. So once they get off the FTO program in about uh three and a half months, they'll move over to that vacant spot. So we'll be at a, at a six and six, or, or six, six and six all the way across the board on those uh squads. And you need to keep that in mind, because right now, we just sent uh probationary officer Weatherwax and Crooks to the academy, so they'll be up there for about four months and then come back, another three to four months of training here, and then they're out on their own. That puts us down to September. Need to keep in mind, uh, this next, or this calendar year, anticipated retirees uh from the department, tenured employees that are, turn fifty-five and they'll be eligible to retire. Uh, one of them retires in September, I know that he is retiring, he, he has made it known that he intends to do that in September. But until that time comes and he actually applies for uh retirement, that's not a, not a given. But I know this guy well enough, he'll retire. And ma- the other one is Major Grimshaw retires at the end of this calendar year in December. So in, in calendar year twenty, Major Grimshaw will be uh retired and moving on, so. And he also has told me that he won't stay, I begged him a little bit, but that only goes so far. Uh, gross general fund expenditures, and there's that, that uh, the increase that you see there uh from the budgeted, six point two four eight and uh six point four seven oh. That's a, that's an increase of about a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. And uh, and, and doing some quick figures, you know, to accept half of the increase for DESCOM uh being in there and, and to accept my part of it and dropping that down, it's an increase of about a hundred and sev- a hundred and twenty-five thousand roughly uh of an increase in that budget from this year to the next fiscal year. If that puts it in, in uh any kind of perspective. Personnel costs, just general fund cost increases for personnel. And, and my figures, uh, that, that I done, just over eight thousand dollars, eight hundred, eight thousand three hundred and seventy dollars uh in personnel cost uh for the department is the increase in the, in the, the general fund cost for that in personnel. DESCOM, um, that's that increase I was talking about, that almost seventy thousand dollar increase there, splitting that in half with thirty-five thousand dollars for each entity, but uh it comes out of my budget. Then the K-nine overtime, it's an increase of five hundred dollars, which is actually reimbursed. That's an overtime cost that's reimbursed uh through uh the foundation that comes back to us. We had uh, had, when we started that program, we had looked for uh private donations and received those to get the program going again. So those costs uh is in, it's increased by five hundred dollars, but that's reimbursed back, so there's actually no increase there. Uh, training at the, at the uh academy and other training cost was an increase of three thousand dollars is what we were asking for. And then GTSB, uh, that Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau grant that we receive uh every year, went to sixteen thousand dollars. Um, and uh, that's also reimbursed through that grant, so that's another increase that you see on there. The last one is the utilities uh for the new uh department increased about fifty thousand dollars. Uh, something that we tried to look at uh before we moved into the facility to try to get a, a good idea of what it was gonna cost. Of course, during construction, it wasn't the same and the bills that they had weren't the same, because the, the inside of the building was completely different and dealing with different uh HVAC systems. So, uh, with the, with the new HVAC sys- VAC system and the building complete and us moving in, it looks like uh we're gonna be asking for an additional fifty thousand dollars in utility cost overall for the police department and other facilities we have.
Was that expected?
Uh, we tried to look at it as if it was, but um, it was hard to, it was hard to guess, you know, because of, of the bank being in there and what they did versus what we do. And, and, and the building, the inside of the, the, the rooms changed and like I said, the systems in there changed. So, I'm really not sure that, that we would even looked at their figures because of those changes inside of the building, the walls moving, uh, the, the insulation that went into it. So we thought, well, we're not really sure, we tried to estimate it as best we could and, you know, as, as it's often said, we were way off. And to the tune of about, our guess was fifty, you know, fifty thousand dollars, I believe, and, and the increase is another fifty is what we're estimating. And we don't know those figures yet, because we haven't been in the building for a complete year and went through a winter cycle and a summer cycle. So, once we get through those winter and summer cycles, we'll have a better idea. Probably next fiscal year, we'll be able to drill that down and just know, you know, that, well, this is what the costs are. Probably next fiscal year, we'll be able to drill that down and just know, you know, that, well, this is what the costs are for an average. So, no, it wasn't anticipated, but, um, it, that was the figures that we come up with. Uh, the personnel expenses in comparison to last or this fiscal year, what was, uh, budgeted. Um, and an increase in administration. The increase in administration. I believe a lot of it has to do with the tenure. You know, myself, I, I'm a thirty-plus year employee and as you know, as you, the more time you spend with a place and, and the increases over the year kinda grows. Um, so the tenure in that office, yeah, myself and Major Grimshaw both are thirty-plus year employees. Uh, Kristen, my administrative assistant, she's getting up to be a, a twenty-year employee with a department. The records clerks, and this is goo- this is amazing. I have a, a records clerk down there. It's been with the city for forty-six years. So, um, with that being said, I have another records clerk that's been there thirty-six years. And then the one with the least tenure is seventeen years. So I have some long-term employees in there, uh, which may drive some of that cost that you're seeing here. Um, so with that being said, um, there has been some conversations about, uh, their plans. You know, uh, down the road, what we can foresee and what we're looking for, just for this reason. To see if we hire somebody in, they're not probably gonna start at the same rate that, uh, some of the, some of the records clerks are at now. So there may be some, uh, anticipated savings there, but that's what we had to budget according to what we have now with them staying here. So, um, and I forgot to mention the custodian is a thirty-five plus year employee also. And he does part-time here at City Hall and part-time for the police department.
He's the best.
Yeah, he is. Uh, some other things on here, the patrol operations. You see that, that negative there, that difference of, of not asking for as much in the budget for patrol. We've had some people leave and retire that are tenured employees, uh, a couple this past year. That may be driving just that, that minimal, uh, difference there. So, uh, we had, uh, a couple twenty-year veterans, one of them passed away and the other one left the department for other employment. So those are kinda some of the things that may be just driving some of that.
It's also impacted by, uh, four eleven system contribution, about forty. You probably have a forty to forty-five thousand dollars less contribution to the retirement program. Uh, in that patrol division and, than in, uh, FY nineteen budget. So that's a fact, that's a big piece.
It is. Uh, and I have, uh, the task force in here, which I talked about. The officer that's in the task force now, uh, is a, is a veteran officer. That's gonna change, uh, this year, not because of that, but he's very valued in there. But we, we restructure or move the department, the officers around the department for experience and training. So, uh, he'll go back to patrol. So to separate that out, the guy that's going in there is not as tenured as the one that's there. So that may, may, uh, be a little bit skewed in the, in the final part of it. And parking enforcement is its own fund in itself. So overall, uh, the difference in there is less than, less than one percent difference from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty. And as, uh, Jim had mentioned, uh, this is the, probably some, most of the driving factor in that.
Yeah, and your health, uh, administration is probably driven as much by health insurance cost increase as anything else.
Yes. Full-time overtime, uh, and as you can see, we was at a hundred and twelve to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Uh, we're budgeted at ninety-five thousand this year, which I think, um.
Chief Beard always budgeted, uh, at, uh, he's, he's like, we can get it down, we can get it down. Um, no, you never got it down. So the hundred and ten thousand is a much more realistic number.
He never got it down.
I didn't throw Chief Beard under the bus.
Someone else was correct.
Let it be written.
So that hundred and ten thousand dollar figure is in there. And, uh, there's some things that drive that, that, that I went back and looked at. And, and during this time, when you see a hundred and twenty-eight thousand here, that's kind of alarming. Uh, but you have to remember what was happening in fiscal year eighteen. We had, uh, several major investigations that, that drove some of that dollar figures there. When you talk about seen security, uh, investigations and them spending uncounted hours on an investigation. And that bleeds over from the investigation into the prosecution part of it and the overtime that goes with it. Also, when you have officers resign from the department or leave the department. And, uh, have to have mandatory overtime situations to hold your shift strength on those patrol, uh, squads. That also drives some of that. So, um, some of it's unavoidable. And like I said, injuries, uh, if an officer gets injured on, on the department and takes some time off, you know? If somebody, I have an officer now with a, with a strained knee and potentially looking at doing surgery. You're talking about six weeks, two months. And for them to be out of a, a patrol operation for that amount of time, you know, and out of the rotation and somebody else takes a day off, we're already at four. So with a, with a six-person squad, we're already at four. So nobody else can have, uh, that time off. But things happen, so, uh, like I said, that's why that overtime may be, uh, unavoidable. And that's just a graph to show you the differences there. This is the traffic safety grant, uh, that we use for, um, officers come in and work overtime, uh, for this grant. And they do nothing but, uh, traffic enforcement. They'll do accidents while they're in. Uh, they'll do, uh, OWI enforcement, speed, seatbelt. We're required to do a seatbelt survey, uh, to participate in this grant. So there's, uh, programs that we do. If you see, uh, like a, like a, a program where there's a major enforcement on one of the highways. We, we partner with the Highway Patrol and the Sheriff's Department and, uh, do those, uh, programs also. To try to curtail, uh, people from, uh, violating the, uh, traffic laws. Security guard overtime, this is, this is, um, is something that, uh, I wanted to address here. And I put on the bottom, the steamboat days is an unknown for June of twenty twenty. And you see the figure here for fiscal year twenty at thirty thousand dollars. This figure here, that thirty-seven five this year, I don't know that we'll utilize all that because we didn't know in two thousand eighteen, when we planned the budget, that steamboat days wasn't gonna happen, which drives some of that. Security guard overtime is, is basically a pass-through. It's not something that we fund and we do as a city. But those, those charges go out to those entities and come back. So that's why it's, it's in this presentation. Getting down to the nuts and bolts, the, uh, capital items that, uh, we've requested, uh, for this fiscal year. And I'm just gonna, and, and some of it's probably old hat, these figures here. Kind, we kinda do an increase, uh, every year, just a minor increase, two, two and a half percent. Uh, just the cost of, of, of equipment and the installation of it. But here we have, uh, a price of thirty-three thousand dollars each for those squad cars. We're asking for three squad cars to keep our fleet in a, in a basically a four to five-year rotation. And that depends on the number of miles. Uh, once they get up to that a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles, uh, it doesn't sound like much. I, my personal car at home has a hundred and forty-three thousand miles on it and I'll drive it probably for another five years. But the use of these vehicles is a lot different than my personal car. Um, and plus, even though it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles, we don't know how many hours it has on that engine. Hours are a big, are a big thing for, uh, Ford Fleet. I did have a conversation with them, uh, about some, uh, vehicle that had some, uh, engine problems that we had to replace the engine in. And I had a long conversation with the gentleman that is the fleet manager for Ford. And, uh, he enlightened me on, on this hybrid vehicle that they're coming out with this next year. And, uh, he said the price tag on it is probably gonna be right around that thirty-three thousand dollars. We purchase our squad cars through state bid. So with, with options to, to put certain options on the vehicle. So that thirty-three thousand dollars is an earmark there, but the key is the hybrid. He, I talked about the quality of the vehicles with the fleet manager and, uh, and what's going on with it. And he talked about, uh, the hours versus miles on a vehicle. Because he said, I know they sit and run. When you stop a car, that car's running probably for fifteen minutes behind that offending vehicle. Just sitting there with its top lights on. So they took that into consideration and created a hybrid that runs a course off of a lower power, uh, when it's sitting there idle. And he said that this vehicle has been tested both in California and in Michigan, which is the standard for police vehicles. And, and it's meeting the, uh, standards through that, through that testing. So I'm curious to start this and buy hybrid vehicles. Um, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about, uh, the savings, the potential savings. When you talk about hybrid vehicles, he was saying the, the gas mileage on those is somewhere in the high thirties. Right now, I looked at it, I'm, I'm gonna say on the low side, it's twelve miles per gallon that we get to a high of fifteen. So, uh, and like I said, keep in mind, the vehicle's running there and not going anywhere. So that kinda skews that. So he says the, the miles per gallon should be in the high thirties. And you look at that as a savings, but if I only buy three vehicles next year, by the time I turn the whole fleet over, it's gonna be four or five years before we actually see a lot of that savings. So I skeptically present to you that it's gonna, on the backside of it, we're gonna save in gas. But that's an increase of probably four to five thousand dollars per vehicle. But, uh, the savings hopefully will roll around to the other side for gas savings down the road.
Have, have they been, uh, extending the life on those then? Um, as far as, you know, the trade-in time before they're trading them in or?
Well, we don't, I don't trade the vehicles in now. The value want for trade-in is not near as good as if we just take the vehicle, strip it down and sell it outright through.
Well, yeah, right, right.
Yeah, but, um, there's, I don't think it's gonna change the value in the end. I'm gonna, I'm anticipating hopefully that the vehicles may last longer or be more serviceable down the road. Just because of, uh, of it, of the standard. And they know the, the difficulties in the fleets that are out there through the police departments that contact them like I did and explain to him. You know, the issues that I've had consistently with the vehicles that we have. So, uh, they've upgraded some of the suspensions in there, which is a big issue with them and done some improvements. And as far as how far they go with it, just to give you an idea. Uh, we replaced some of the partitions in there. We, we put partitions from one vehicle to the next. When we went from Crown Vex to the, the Ford Explorers, we had to buy all new partitions because they wouldn't transfer over. They tried to avoid some of that by making their vehicle, and they heard the officer saying they're not big enough in the passenger compartment in the back for us to put someone in. So they made them bigger, but they're also gonna make, they've invited in these vendors that sell partitions and different things to come in and make measurements. So they can make accommodating brackets so you don't have to buy all new partitions at a cost of about a thousand bucks, a hundred bucks. So to buy that kit, it's probably gonna be a hundred, two hundred dollars to buy that kit. So they're thinking ahead, trying to do, you know, cause they know that, that we have tight budgets. But this say, this price here is, is what they said the cost is gonna be thirty-three thousand dollars. But I wanna move and at least try the hybrid vehicles. I can't promise you next year, I'm gonna come back and say, I'm gonna buy three more. But I wanna at least try and move that direction and see if, see if it is what they say it is.
So Chief, when you say, when you say hybrid, because people might get it confused, we're, you're not talking about electric hybrid.
Yes.
You're, you are talking about electric hybrid.
Does it have a battery on it?
Yes.
Okay, so is it the style where when you're idling, then a couple cylinders drop out and runs off the electric?
Exactly, and that's where the, the gas savings comes in.
All right, cool.
Does it resemble the, uh, Fred Flintstone build? You got any yabba dabba do and move your feet to get it going or?
I don't think it's gonna look like a Prius, but it'll, it'll be the same style as like we have in other bodies that we have now.
So are you gonna, are, is your plan just to get the three and then just take a couple of years and figure out how they work? And what kinda maintenance costs associated with them?
I think once I buy these vehicles, that I'll, I'll know and have a good idea of, of, I'll get the, I'll get the information back from the officers. Cause they'll respond right away how they perform and, and the way that they work.
I'm just questioning the, the long-term cost savings. Because typically the, the cost to maintain a battery-powered vehicle is a little bit higher.
And I, yeah.
And while we will save money on the fuel, we're spending a lot of that money upfront because it's five thousand dollars more per vehicle. So I'm just curious, are you gonna try this and see how it works before we order more? Are we gonna dive right in and keep ordering?
Well, I'm gonna try and purchase the three and do exactly what you said and see how much the savings are. I tried to put the pen to paper and do it with the mileage that we're having now. And when I did that, it was probably right around that five thousand dollars that I figured out that we would save, uh, over the whole fleet. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
You know, and, and trying to break it down with one.
I thought when we bought the hybrids for, uh, uh, for downstairs, I thought that the warranties or something were supposed to be better. That they had some type of special warranty on that or extended or something. No?
And we, those were on a lease purchase, so we were in a much different type of situation. And it did have a, a, a decent warranty on it, but it was under the terms of the lease and we had, we still had to buy out at the end. I mean, it's just part of the deal. It's different than what they do with their fleet.
There's nothing pinning me to that hybrid. Um, if I decide, uh, at the next, in July, when we start looking at, uh, our next fiscal year vehicles. You know, and this being at thirty-three thousand, decide to go back and not purchase that hybrid because of, of, you know, information that I receive or it costs more, whether it's vehicle maintenance charges or I talked to, uh, Ron out at vehicle maintenance. And he says, this'll be an issue for my mechanics and this'll cost me this much. I'll, I'll keep evaluating it. And if that's the case, this price tag is probably gonna go, uh, right now, I think it's at twenty-eight thousand, right around twenty-eight thousand for a standard, uh, V six motor, um, uh, without the, uh, EcoBoost. Um, and it'll be probably at a, probably twenty-five, twenty-nine, somewhere around there.
I'm impressed, Chief. It's good for the environment. How do you put a price on that?
Well.
Way to go. At least try it, let's try it, you know?
If I could show some savings, that's, that's what it's, that's what the intentions are and a quality vehicle, so.
Yeah.
And they're saying it performs that way. This is actually the pictured vehicle from the flyer, so, uh, like I said, and they've, they've sent information and I've received a lot of information about it. Read magazines, police chief magazines, so on and so forth. Uh, continued capital items, other capital items in there is, uh, the rotation of equipment, tasers, computer printers for the squad cars, PBTs, radar units. And I wanna point out these body worn cameras. Right there, you see the, the number going down to two next year. I found another department that had overstocked body worn cameras, uh, that, the same ones that we used. Uh, that they weren't going to use and hadn't intended on using. Uh, so, um, at a very reduced rate, uh, they're now in my possession to use for our department. So, uh, and that was a total of about eight. And so this number is usually at a ten and that's what it's, it's projected in the CIP to be ten. But next fiscal year, I can, I can just bring that down to two for a little bit of savings there. And this is the revenues that were presented to me and, and Jim can probably look at those and tell you if that's pretty much, um, that's where I got those figures. There, just to give you an idea. And I talked briefly, uh, about the pop unit, the importance of the pop unit and those officers that, that, uh, are funded. Those two officers that work in that position, um, taken us from forty-three to forty-five a couple of years ago. And, uh, this is kind of a, just an idea of what they do on a, a, a very brief, uh, idea of what they do on a daily basis. And those two officers on that flex schedule and what they provide for the department. And, uh, and as the, as the year continues on, uh, during the annual budget time, I'll have some information in there. And I have a few statistics here to kinda, uh, bring you up to date on, on what we're looking at, what they do specifically. Now, I want you to keep in mind here, these here figures do not include the patrol division. I think, um, last year, we were at, uh, weapons seized, I think it was a hundred and sixteen overall for the entire department. Weapons that we seized last year, um, and those are their numbers, their numbers last year that they did. This is their numbers. They're right in line, still working hard, getting, uh, getting out there and, and taking weapons off the street, trying to identify those offenders or problems that are going to happen and then doing those investigations. They work very well with our narcotics task force. So you see down here, uh, the warrant arresting, arrest includes eight federal indictments. What, what we have done is, when you talk about federal indictments, uh, those a lot of times deal with, uh, conspiracy cases. Conspiracy to distribute, uh, narcotics, uh, when, when the feds start looking at that. Uh, they also look at, uh, felons in possession of firearms, career criminals in possession of firearms. Or, uh, criminals that are in possession of firearms that are trafficking narcotics, that they're very interested in. So what we've done is, is, uh, made a rela- I guess established a relationship with the federal prosecutor in the US Attorney's Office out of Davenport. Been successful. Been successful uh in two thousand eighteen alone with eight federal indictments. There's offenders that are receiving two hundred and forty months and they go at in months, not years in the federal court system. Two hundred and forty months is a long time to be gone, but it basically takes somebody out of these criminal enterprises for that amount of time. And you say, well, what happens is somebody else is just gonna fill that void. That may be the case, but it takes them a little while while to get established and hopefully with these POP unit guys working, they'll identify who they are. And taken out of that picture a lot sooner. So those are all theories that we're using and it seems to be uh helping with those officers that are assigned to that. And the seven seventy-nine felony arrests are basically onsite arrests. These are warrant arrests, both uh uh federal warrants and uh state warrants, that they have executed those two officers individually. So I'm gonna say this, but I also wanna say that our patrol division, uh we have officers on the patrol division that are still. Uh adding to these figures. So uh they're out there doing what needs to be done, part of that is the their tenure, they're very ambitious. Uh and out there uh working hard and doing what they need to do and especially these officers in the POP unit. So that's the importance of that POP unit and I think uh with some of the the crimes that we saw back here. Um maybe a result of these numbers increasing and and getting some of those those uh career criminals, major offenders. You know, out of our community where and uh put in a in a situation where hopefully they'll learn and come back a better person.
Chief, that those those are partially funded by the cops grant, now is that is that over with or is that is that one that you continue to apply for?
There's no, there's no uh new application that's been uh presented at this point.
Okay.
Cop, and any cops grant that you do have aren't a continued funding positions that are existing there for to add on new ones above and beyond.
And part of that add-on was this this POP unit program.
Okay.
So we report it, we report on these statist- statistics to that uh grant reporting system. So they're aware of what we're doing and and the successes that we're having and how we did it. New police facility, we talked about um the utilities there. Uh we moved uh back in May, May twenty-third, uh it was a three-day process, went really smooth. And it's designed, this facility is designed to accommodate growth. And uh as part of that growth, um as we added the two officers, it wasn't hard for us to to move forward. And allow them the space to do what they need to do. Or um recently, uh we was awarded a grant for a firearms training simulator that uh I need to just. Uh fulfill that obligation for that grant and find a place in the police department and now I have, I have a space identified. I just have to get the process done and get that that L.O. executed, which will happen in this year, this calendar year. So uh with that being said, uh the accommodation for growth is there. And when I say growth, forty, fifty years, you know, we was in a facility over there for twenty-plus years that we were supposed to be in for ten. But this facility should accommodate us, I know it will, for the next fifty years at least. And so uh I put in here uh the repurposing of an existing downtown building and remodeled it. Uh to a law enforcement facility at a much lower cost than new construction. James Estes, the architect that designed our building, he came in uh by for a visit yesterday. And I spent about an hour and a half, two hours, because he came in and wanted to know if everything was okay, what they did, design issues, things that we saw that we would do different. And we went through the whole department and he he shared with me, uh he's up in North Liberty, uh working with the police chief up there. And he said, you guys got in at the right time. He said, the cost per square foot when you got in, he said, he thought it was two hundred, around two hundred and sixty-four dollars a square foot. And he said, the cost now, he said, for this facility they're doing up in New Liberty, where North Liberty is uh three hundred and fifteen dollars a square foot. So he said, timing was everything for you, you hit it at the right time. And he said, and I don't know of anybody that can accomplish what you accomplished for five point two million dollars. So uh he was very complimentary on doing that and he said he had never done a structure uh like that, a a remodel. And he said it kinda gave him a a new light and things to look for, so he was very appreciative and and like I said, uh very. A very uh good conversation with him and and he was very complimentary of of our city being able to do that. And I personally know that uh Marshalltown has a new public safety building, which includes police and fire. And I think the price tag on that was eighteen or nineteen million dollars.
You should see the size of the structure too, I mean, its square footage is drives what that is.
Yeah, so um for us to do it for the cost that we did it, I think I think it's a bargain price for what we got. And uh with that being said, you know, that like I said, the the utility costs are there. And we're constantly looking at doing things to maybe de- decrease some of that. There's some issues with unused, unused portion of it and uh cold air coming in and things like that. So uh we're looking at cutting some of those costs, but we just don't know the the bottom line. I always wanna talk about community sport, support, because it's important to what we do, uh some of the things we do. Uh the shop with the cop, the Midwest Magic, uh the Boots and Badges uh is a great fundraiser uh for and for the community. It's well-attended, uh the partnership that we have with the school, we did a youth academy out at the National Guard uh facility this summer. It was, it was uh, them kids love it and and we love to do it and the officer's very excited about going out and doing it anytime we get a chance to work with the youth. The partnership that we have with the school for the after-school program, the pieces program are important. Um financial support for a local child safety program, the the guy just came to me and he'll be soliciting donations for the flyers. When we go out and do presentations for the kids in the schools and things like that, so we still keep those partnerships. Uh the safe alternative to trick-or-treat contributions we receive are untold. Um the NAACP partnership, which is important, and Mayor, I think you alluded to it with Major Grimshaw's uh accomplishment there. Which has a lot to uh, it says a lot about.
It does say a lot.
About our relationship with the community as in the police department as a whole. And we continue to to try and improve that relationship. Um South Hill Neighborhood Association meeting events, uh this eleven thousand dollars in private donations uh to the foundation. Um before that foundation was created, those funds were never available. But I asked them for things that we can't, we can't have in our budget or don't have in our, money in our budget for, and they provide it. I just asked them, I had a meeting today, I just asked them for more money for our honor guard uh uniforms and things like that. And I know if I give them a dollar figure, they'll probably uh approve that and we'll move forward, so. Um and if anybody, if any of you have seen the honor guard lately and just the 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 pride that those officers take in what they do. And how it showcases the department, I'm very proud of them and proud of what they do and and the effort they put forward for that. Uh community faith or continuous faith-based support and our chaplain corps. Uh we have one of the largest chaplain corps in the state for a police department and uh that's still going on. And then this last one right here, the Untold Hours of Voluntarism. When we hire a new officer, uh that's one of the things we ask them, what do they do to volunteer? What they do to give back to the community before they even get here. And I've sat in those interviews and some of them look at me like with a blank stare and don't have any idea what volunteerism is. But the ones that do, you can see them in other questioning how they rise above the other candidates that we have, so that's important for us. Costs and concerns to consider and then I'll I'll be done. Um cost of hiring, training and equipping officers uh is of course uh a priority for us. We want the best trained officers out there, I think the community wants the best trained officers out there. The equipment that they have, I've seen other departments that that uh try to equip their officers at the bare minimum. I think we have good equipment, the officers appreciate it and they utilize it the best way they can. Uh and that goes all the way from the equipment in the squad cars, getting information in a timely manner and uh just fulfilling some of their oblig- obligations. This here, this time delay of nine months and overtime expense to maintain staff levels when replacing officers, that's nine months. When I talk about, and if you remember, I talked about the officer that's retiring in September. If I don't hire for him uh before he leaves and I wait until the August academy, I'm without that that forty-fifth officer. For basically nine months while we train somebody, so that puts me into the next next year. Probably in about March of two thousand twenty before that officer gets out on his own. So it causes a strain on the department when somebody leaves. And when, and I know the two retirements and I haven't talked about someone that leaves unexpectedly. Or someone that finds another job or or doesn't wanna be in law enforcement, because we're dealing with forty-five officers here and they all have their own goals and objectives. And I understand it, why they leaving, why they wanna go and move on or move up or move to another agency, I get it. And I don't, I don't hold them back or or blame them for doing that, but it does cause a strain when they give me two weeks notice and I'm looking at this right here, nine months. So it is an issue and so when I, when I talk about this time delay, I wanna keep that in mind. When we talk about the additional staffing here, going from forty-five uh certified officers to forty-seven. This past year when Chief Beard retired, um and then we had, right before that, we had an officer that got out of law enforcement. And then uh we had another officer that got out of law enforcement. We expected Chief Beard to retire and then the next retirement was supposed to be the officer that retires this September. So with those, with those guys leaving, this last year, we worked at forty-three, forty-three sworn officers from about March all the way up until now. And you see the officers that are in the FTO program to replace those, but in in my estimate, they are not on a shift. Being able to work or or fulfill that obligation to keep a shift strength of four officers and one command officer. So that's, that's kinda my plug for the need, if it's not forty-seven officers, uh the over-hiring is what I call over-hiring. Would be a a big ask or it'd be a benefit to me to be able to foresee that and hire that person. And I know it's scary and and I know I've had this conversation with the city manager and he knows I've been out begging, but um. The scary part of it is if the officer that's supposed to retire in September, in August decides, I'm not retiring and I've over-hired. I've hired a person and we're training them that we have, where that we're overstaffed, we're over that forty-five dollar or forty-five sworn officer threshold. And I know that's scary, but uh just to have forty-sixth officer and keep it as an over-hire. Just to have uh that available to utilize in those situations. And if we're at forty-six and and I'm gonna say this and Chief Beard would probably echo this if he was here, but. People come and people go in the police department and his entire tenure on the department and while I was his major, we were never at full strength. And and him and I often joked about it, we're never at full strength. Over his whole tenure, he was never at full strength for a long period of time. It may have been a week or two, but that would be about it. And and that sounds silly, but that is the truth of it. So to ask for another officer at a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars per officer, it sounds like a big price tag. But in reality, we're never at full strength. We're always looking at training somebody and getting somebody on the department through the hiring process. Lastly, down here, the additional part-time clerical staff and in part-time thirty-four thousand there. Uh to support the increased transcription filing, data entry, alarm permit administration. This alarm permit administration um and alarm permitting comes through the police department. There's other opportunities and and we're looking at uh uh there's companies out there that offer this. They'll, they offer the administration of alarm permits for cities at a at a percentage of the cost that they they, that we charge for those alarm permits. And the false alarm fees. So we're looking into that on that billing side to see if we can uh maybe recover some of those revenues that are lost. I think this year we're at, it has gotten as high as uh I think fourteen thousand dollars, twelve or fourteen thousand dollars annually that we get through that alarm permitting. And I think this year we're just over two thousand, so we're kinda behind on on where we're at with that false alarm billing and those permits. And it's just because of the time that's that's cut out, because the clerical staff is down from their their three full-time and one part-time. To just three and losing that part-time, so the part-time would would assist with that. Additionally, uh just so you know, I have have a evidence custodian or an evidence specialist that I hired a couple of years ago. Came into the department, highly recommended, she's a, she's an employee uh for us and has been a great employee for us. And uh she's, her situation, the home has changed a little bit and she cannot, no longer work for us part-time. She looked for full-time employment and received that, so she left. She's a valuable employee, but uh that's a part-time position, I understand the cost difference between part-time and full-time. So that's kinda where uh some of this has has been generated from from. So uh with all that being said, that's where we're at, we're trying to do the most we can for the dollars that we get. Uh am I asking for more? Yes, I am. Um uh to make the operation just a little more efficient um at a price tag. Uh and some, and some of that's in in this presentation, so uh I hope uh that the synopsis there kind of explains it. We're working very hard every day to make this place a better live, work and play. So I'll entertain any questions you have, any uh any comments, anything else that I left out that you feel is necessary to know.
Just wanna say we appreciate all the hard work you do and uh for your first time, doing your first budget, well done, Chief.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Chief, does the the numbers that you've presented here, does that include your two increase or it does not include?
It does not, no.
Um, couple other quick questions, do the guys, do they have high-impact plates?
In their body armor?
Yeah.
No, the ones that have a high-impact plates are are tactical response unit and that's a pretty heavy price tag to, for them to. For us to replace those uh body armor is a lot more expensive than what we have.
But just the plate, just to get the?
Yeah, we have them in the front, uh the trauma plates in the front, yeah. But when you're talking about high-impact for like uh rifle rounds, stuff like that, no, it doesn't, it doesn't resist that.
Okay, what, is that something that you would like to get? And the reason I ask is so, and and um I've seen the vests where the plate is is eight inches by four inches. They're about sixty bucks for a front and back.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that would be likely that you would explore the possibility of getting? And I looked at some of your numbers, I saw where you were taking more rifles off the street, more more shotguns. So that's what brought the question to my head is, do the guys have high-impact plates? If you're taking more of those weapons off the street, then the likelihood of one of them being used on an officer is is increasing. So is that something worth exploring?
It is worth exploring and and my first question would be to ask them about, uh I would look at the weight of it, because after being in this thing all day.
Oh, yeah, I know.
You'll understand the weight and I I think you do. Um another thing that I that I've considered and am considering is taking it from uh the duty belt up to a load-bearing vest. And there's a lot of considerations and a lot of things that that I won't mention here that I wanna take into consideration to accomplish that. Um and and I just haven't got it done yet this year, so that's something that I'm looking into. I myself am, have received back surgery, Mayor, you probably know about uh backs in and of itself. Chief Beard had back surgery to repair his back, I think a lot of it has to do with the gear we wear on our on our waist.
Yeah.
And a lot of departments are moving to a load-bearing vest, so there's some considerations there, so that's why I talk about the weight up here. And how much it would weigh and how much it would inconvenience or or cause immobility of the movement.
I've got one, I'll bring you it.
Okay.
See what it looks like.
Appreciate it, yeah.
It's old, but I've got.
Yeah, I'll take the ideas.
The other question I had was, and I know we've talked about it in the past, but um is there any desire to look at trying to put together a um a police department? Um ran or sponsored community watch program? Is that something that, I brought it up about a year ago and it was, we were told that the staffing wasn't there. I'm guessing that's probably still gonna be the same answer today, um but is it something that might be gaining traction in the near future?
I'm I'm curious to have you define community watch program.
Well, I guess.
Neighborhood watch?
Yeah, kinda like a proactive neighborhood watch program that has got some level of direction uh from the police department.
We have, we have a liaison to the neighborhood watch program, we have a one of our command staff that's assigned to that. Um and the activity for those programs is pretty much geared towards the citizens and themselves. And we don't uh try to drive it to the community uh and and put dollars to it. They do a lot of that themselves and and to get that buy-in through those neighborhood watch programs is important for those people that are in the neighborhoods. More so than us coming out telling them, you need to do this or you need to do that, directing them to do it. Um so that's driven more from the citizens to come to us and ask for directions or ideas or things that they can do. To help improve safety in their neighborhood and what they can do to do that. So um there is a liaison for the neighborhood watch program, you know, as far as taking that to a more proactive level. I'm willing to have that conversation if you, if you wanna share, so.
Good.
Anything else for the chief?
I had a quick question.
Yes.
So you were asking for about thirty-four thousand extra for a clerical person? If this clerical person were hired, would they be responsible for any positive social media campaign? Are you doing anything like that?
Yeah, our positive, well, our social media campaign comes from uh my command staff and and putting the information out there. And one of the, one of the roadblocks is keeping it positive. One of the, uh, one of the roadblocks is keeping it positive.
I know, I notice that, sometimes it goes out, yeah.
That are on there, um, and, and we try to put it out as positive and sometimes it turns around. Uh, so, it's run by my command staff right now, but I don't, that part-time clerical would not be used for that.
Okay.
And when I, when I'm talking about a part-time clerical, and I mentioned to you the forty-five-year employee, the thirty-five-year employee. And the one that has, you know, twenty years on the department, so, uh, I anticipate that to change over the next year or two. Uh, with that, those staff members, so moving somebody in part-time would be beneficial to get them trained.
Yeah.
Uh, with the knowledge that's there with a forty-five-year.
Yeah.
Yeah, before it's gone, and so that's why that ask is there, partially it's selfishness on my part to, to not lose that information before they leave. And just walk out the door and train somebody to come in, so.
But it sounds like you've got extra dictation and things that, that need done, that are getting, getting dropped, so it sounds like it's, it's definitely in need.
So what's the total of the ask?
The total of the ask, with the, with the two officers, the two officers is, uh, well, at a thousand dollars, uh, per officer is what, what the figure was.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, I'm sorry, and then the, the. Those days are gone for a thousand dollars for an employee.
And then the thirty-four?
Yes. Yeah, so it's basically two hundred and thirty-four thousand is the ask on, on top of the.
The capital stuff, that was, that was already in there?
Yep.
Okay, so capital's in there.
Capital's in there.
It's just in the proposed budget, your, your ask isn't in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for chief?
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
James?
Thanks, chief.
That's it for tonight?
No closing comments?
One thing we didn't cover out of the packet, the stuff that you had in there, there is a bulletin from the League of Cities. It gives some general background information, I'd encourage you to review it, just, uh, uh, keeps you up to date in terms of the laws of interest. That kinda govern how we can do budgets and what we have to take into account as we go through this process. What's the impact at a state level of the different funding sources and expenditure categories we have?
Who's, uh, alright, who's bringing some goodies next, uh, next budget? Anybody wanna volunteer?
Is that a Monday night? It is a Monday night, isn't it?
It is a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
What do people want?
Anyone?
I'm trying to think, didn't you have a schedule of what was bringing brought, what was on the schedule for next time?
I, I didn't, I didn't set up a schedule.
Oh, I thought you did.
If nobody says anything for tomorrow, then I'll just, you guys have to bring whatever I eat, or you guys, I'll eat whatever I bring.
I'll, uh, let me, let me check in for Monday.
And, uh, this being, are we done?
Yep, see you on Monday.
Okay, goodnight, everybody, thank you.